The Senate will come to order. The senators will take their seats. Those persons not entitled to the privileges of the floor will retire to the gallery. Good afternoon, senators.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, guests.
Good afternoon.
And as we continue this wonderful afternoon, just a quick reminder that those in the gallery will refrain from any clapping and that our senators on the floor will remain in their seats as well. The senators and all in attendance, if you are able, please rise. We will be led in prayer this morning by the Reverend H. Carson Rhine Jr. of Union Presbyterian Seminary in Richmond. Following the prayer, if everyone will please remain standing, and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of our great America by Rose Ramsey, Assistant Clerk in our Senate Clerk's office.
Let us pray. God of grace and God of glory, we call upon you to become among us. Come and enlighten us. Come and embolden us. Come and direct us. We're grateful for the celebration this week of the birthday of this great country. May the celebrations be joyful, uplifting, as we remember with gratitude the effort of so many who have come before us and provided us with this free country. Enable now the senators in this special session to be focused on the task ahead this day. May their decisions be for the benefit of all concerned. May their decisions be what's best for the Commonwealth. May their decisions reflect concern for the well-being of all. Bless this special session to accomplish the tasks that are before us. Blessing and honor in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All those present, please vote aye. The clerk will close the roll.
You have a quorum, Madam President. Senate Journal for Friday, June 21, 2024.
The Senator from Roanoke, Senator Suterline, moves that the reading of the Journal be waived. Those in favor of waiving the reading of the Journal will record their votes, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-five, noes, four.
Ayes, thirty-five, noes, four. The reading of the Journal is waived. The clerk will report any communications from the House of Delegates. Chair calls on Senator Suravel, the Senator from Eastern Fairfax County.
Good afternoon, Madam President.
Good afternoon.
Madam President, I'd move to waive reading of the communication from the House of Delegates.
The question is, shall the reading of the communication from the House of Delegates be waived? Those in favor of waiving the reading will record their votes, aye. Those opposed, no. Are the senators ready to vote? Have all the senators voted? Does any senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes, thirty-seven, noes, two.
Ayes, thirty-seven, noes, two. The reading of the communication from the House of Delegates is waived. The clerk will report any communications from the Governor.
We do not have any, Madam President.
Chair calls on the Senator from Shenandoah, Senator French.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I would like to request the leave of absent for my seatmate, the Senator from Stafford, on account of pressing personal business.
We thank the Senator. The General will so record it. We have now arrived at the time in our morning hour when we will hear who all of our beautiful guests are. And the normal procedure is, your Senator will rise and tell us who you are, and if you will refrain from clapping at that time, then I will be able to officially welcome you on behalf of the Senate, and then we will give you the applause that you so richly deserve. And so with that, I do call on the Senator from Arlington, Senator Favola.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I do rise on a point of personal privilege.
The Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Joining us in the gallery today are leaders of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the Virginia Department. And one of their leaders here is Mitch Rubenstein, and he is the Virginia State Commander. I think it's important to remember that the VFW does advocate on behalf of veterans, and they also create a community so camaraderie and support can be available to our veterans and their families. The VFW recently celebrated its 100th anniversary, and the VFW has 126 posts throughout the Commonwealth totaling 35,000 members, and they're in every region of our Commonwealth. It is with great pleasure that I can introduce them. We certainly all appreciate and honor the work of our veterans, and we are pleased that you have joined us today in the Senate. And I hope it is the will of the Senate to welcome members of the VFW.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are so glad to host you in your Senate. We are glad that you are here. You are veterans of foreign wars. We're so glad that you came home, and so many did not. And we honor them, and we honor you for risking your life on behalf of your country. Thank you for your volunteerism. Senators, let us please give them the warm welcome of their Senate. Chair recognizes the Senior Senator from Virginia Beach, Senator DeStef.
Good afternoon, Madam President.
Good afternoon, Senator.
I rise for an introduction.
The Senator has the floor.
Madam President, it's my distinct honor to introduce Mr. Chuck Ziegler, who's the Commissioner of Department of Veteran Services for the state of Virginia. Chuck is in the gallery today with us. He had a very distinguished career dedicated to serving our nation's veterans. Mr. Ziegler became a wealth of experience, passion, and commitment to his role. Under his leadership, DVS has made significant strides in enhancing the quality of life for our veterans and their families through innovative programs and unwavering support. We also had the opportunity to hear him in our testimony on Friday in front of the VNESTEP Task Force over in the GAB Friday, and he did a fantastic job. Please welcome me in joining the Commissioner, Chuck Ziegler, to the Senate. Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner, thank you very much for your distinguished service on behalf of your country, number one. And the Senator told us that you are engaged in enhancing the quality of life for our veterans, some of whom we have just welcomed to their Senate today. That is so key in ensuring that those who have given of themselves for their country are indeed recognized and don't have to wait too much longer for those benefits they so richly deserve. Thank you very much, sir. And now, Senators, let us give him the warm welcome of his Senate. Chair recognizes Senator Hashmi, the Senator from Chesterfield.
Good afternoon, Madam President.
Good afternoon.
I rise for an introduction.
The Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Our invocation this afternoon was provided by the Reverend H. Carson Rhine Jr., who is an adjunct instructor of Practical Theology at Union Presbyterian Seminary. I regret that Reverend Rhine was not able to remain for us, with us, I'm sorry, could not remain with us for this introduction, but I did want to acknowledge the wonderful work that the Reverend continues to do after his retirement. Post his retirement from the Presbyterian of the James, Reverend Rhine has continued to serve as an adjunct instructor and has continued also to be a very vibrant and important presence in our Richmond area community. And I ask that despite his absence, we still give him a warm welcome of the Senate. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, ma'am. The Reverend has departed, and, well, I don't mean it that way, but he's left the building. But we do thank him for his prayer, certainly, and he is always available when we've called on him to come and certainly give us words of wisdom, and so we do thank him. I don't know that any pastor can ever really retire, and indeed, you've already said he is now also an adjunct professor. So for the record, we will thank him in absentia. Senator Suterline, the Senator from Roanoke.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to direct the Senate's attention to the gallery and to make an introduction.
The Senator may say on.
Thank you, Madam President. In the gallery today is a longtime friend of mine, retired Army Lieutenant Colonel Dan McConnell of Fairfax. He's a West Point grad and served with distinction in the United States military for a long career, and after that, served the country in other capacities also associated with our military. He's been a longtime friend of mine, and he was very kind to let me spend a disproportionate amount of my high school years at his home, and it's great to have him here today with the Senate.
Thank you, Colonel, for coming. And it is always interesting that in America, we have such a large military force even without conscription, and that really speaks to the greatness of our great country. So proud to have served also with you. Senators, let us give him the warm welcome of his Senate. For what purpose does the Senator from Eastern Fairfax County rise?
Thank you, Madam President. No other senators desire to speak during the morning hour.
The Senator has the floor.
I would move that we stand at recess for about 10 minutes so that the caucuses can go chat for a few minutes with each other. And I think the Senator from Hanover might have an announcement on that.
The Senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, the Senate Republicans are going to meet in the conference room in the back immediately.
Without objection, the Senate stands at recess for 10 minutes.
Order, the senators will take their seats. Senator Sorrell, the senator from Eastern Fairfax County.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise for a motion.
Senator may say on.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd move that the Senate stand in recess until 4:15 and speak to that motion.
The senator may continue.
Thank you, Madam President. So, ladies and gentlemen, the plan is for the Senate to stand in recess till 4:15. That should give the Senate Finance Committee sufficient time to hear, huh, hear two bills that have been, had been, they're going to be docketed for as soon as we get there, the two, two bills on the Veterans Dependence Program. And then after that, we should, assuming one of those bills comes out of committee, we should be back here to vote on a bill hopefully at 4:15. That's the plan. I want to make sure everybody knows that.
Without objection, the Senate stands at recess until 4:15.
Thank you.
...
Madam Clerk. The clerk will call the calendar.
Senate Calendar for Monday, July 1st, 2024. Memorial Resolutions.
Chair recognizes the Senator from Eastern Fairfax County, Senator Suravel.
Madam President, I move that the memorial resolutions on Page 1, S.R. 625 through 630 be considered in the block in the usual manner, waiving the reading of the resolutions thereof with the understanding that any Senator desiring a resolution to be removed from the block do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution.
The question is, shall the memorial resolutions on Page 1, Senate Resolution 625, through Senate Resolution 630 be considered in the block in the usual manner, waiving the reading thereof with the understanding that any Senator desiring a resolution to be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the title of the resolution? All in favor of the motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to, the resolutions are before us in the block. The clerk will now read the titles of the memorial resolutions.
Senate Resolution 625, Celebrating the Life of Bob Labonte. Senate Resolution 627, Celebrating the Life of Colonel Frank Salambine, United States Army Retired. Senate Resolution 629, Celebrating the Life of Colin Goats Campbell. Senate Resolution 630, Celebrating the Life of Randolph Nicholas Reynolds, Sr.
The resolutions will be agreed to in the usual manner. All those in favor of agreeing to the memorial resolutions will please rise. The resolutions are agreed to.
Commending Resolutions.
Chair again recognizes the Senator from Eastern Fairfax County, Senator Suravel.
Thank you, Madam President. Even though this motion will take longer than it would to just read the two resolutions by themselves, I move that the commending resolutions on Pages 2, S.R. 626 to 628 be considered in the block by a voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolutions with the understanding that any Senator desiring a resolution to be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the title of the resolution. All in favor of that motion will say aye. Those opposed, no.
The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to, the resolutions are before us in the block. The clerk will now read the titles of the memorial resolutions.
Senate Resolution 625, Celebrating the Life of Bob Labonte. Senate Resolution 627, Celebrating the Life of Colonel Frank Salambine, United States Army Retired. Senate Resolution 629, Celebrating the Life of Colin Goats Campbell. Senate Resolution 630, Celebrating the Life of Randolph Nicholas Reynolds, Sr.
The resolutions will be agreed to in the usual manner. All those in favor of agreeing to the memorial resolutions will please rise. The resolutions are agreed to.
Commending Resolutions.
Chair again recognizes the Senator from Eastern Fairfax County, Senator Suravel.
Thank you, Madam President. Even though this motion will take longer than it would to just read the two resolutions by themselves, I move that the commending resolutions on Pages 2, S.R. 626 to 628 be considered in the block by a voice vote, waiving the reading of the resolutions with the understanding that any Senator desiring a resolution to be removed from the block will do so after the clerk has read the number of the resolution.
All those in favor of that motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion is agreed to, the bills are before us, the resolutions are before us in the block. The clerk will now read the number of the resolutions.
Senate Resolution 626, 628.
All those in favor of agreeing to the resolutions will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the resolutions are agreed to. Senator Suravel. For what purpose does the Senator from Eastern Fairfax County rise?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Senate determined to consider Senate Bill 6011 earlier than 48 hours after introduction pursuant to Rule 2 of HJR 6001. It was passed at the beginning of the special session.
Madam President.
For what purpose does the Senator from Hanover rise?
Madam President, rise for the purposes of a parliamentary inquiry.
The Senator may state it.
Madam President, pursuant to Rule 2, would not both the House and Senate have to vote prior to taking up the bill earlier to the 48 hours?
The Senator is correct. According to Rule 2, neither House shall consider such budget bills earlier than 48 hours after introduction unless both Houses respectively determine to proceed earlier by a vote of 2/3 of the members voting in each House.
Thank you, Madam President.
Now then.
Madam President.
For what purpose does the Senator rise?
I appreciate the fact that Madam President just gave an opinion. We still haven't taken a vote on the motion.
I was about to do that, Senator. I understood we had a motion on the floor.
Got it, I thought it wasn't clear to me you were about to call for the vote. Thank you.
The question is, shall the Senate determine to consider Senate Bill 6011 earlier than the 48 hours after introduction? All in favor of the motion will record their votes aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Does any Senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 20, no's 17.
Ayes 20, no's 17. The motion fails. Senator Suravel. For what purpose does the Senator from Eastern Fairfax County rise?
Madam President, I move that the Senate determined to consider Senate Bill 6011 earlier than 48 hours after introduction pursuant to Rule 2 of HJR 6001. It was passed at the beginning of the special session.
Madam President.
For what purpose does the Senator from Hanover rise?
Madam President, rise for the purposes of a parliamentary inquiry.
The Senator may state it.
Madam President, pursuant to Rule 2, would not both the House and Senate have to vote prior to taking up the bill earlier to the 48 hours?
The Senator is correct. According to Rule 2, neither House shall consider such budget bills earlier than 48 hours after introduction unless both Houses respectively determine to proceed earlier by a vote of 2/3 of the members voting in each House.
Thank you, Madam President.
Now then.
Madam President.
For what purpose does the Senator rise?
I appreciate the fact that Madam President just gave an opinion. We still haven't taken a vote on the motion.
I was about to do that, Senator. I understood we had a motion on the floor.
Got it, I thought it wasn't clear to me you were about to call for the vote. Thank you.
The question is, shall the Senate determine to consider Senate Bill 6011 earlier than the 48 hours after introduction? All in favor of the motion will record their votes aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Does any Senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 20, no's 17.
Ayes 20, no's 17. The motion fails. Senator Suravel. For what purpose does the Senator from Eastern Fairfax County rise?
Madam President, I move that the Senate determined to consider Senate Bill 6011 earlier than 48 hours after introduction pursuant to Rule 2 of HJR 6001. It was passed at the beginning of the special session.
Madam President.
For what purpose does the Senator from Hanover rise?
Madam President, rise for the purposes of a parliamentary inquiry.
The Senator may state it.
Madam President, pursuant to Rule 2, would not both the House and Senate have to vote prior to taking up the bill earlier to the 48 hours?
The Senator is correct. According to Rule 2, neither House shall consider such budget bills earlier than 48 hours after introduction unless both Houses respectively determine to proceed earlier by a vote of 2/3 of the members voting in each House.
Thank you, Madam President.
Now then.
Madam President.
For what purpose does the Senator rise?
I appreciate the fact that Madam President just gave an opinion. We still haven't taken a vote on the motion.
I was about to do that, Senator. I understood we had a motion on the floor.
Got it, I thought it wasn't clear to me you were about to call for the vote. Thank you.
The question is, shall the Senate determine to consider Senate Bill 6011 earlier than the 48 hours after introduction? All in favor of the motion will record their votes aye. Those opposed, no. Are the Senators ready to vote? Have all the Senators voted? Does any Senator desire to change their vote? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 20, no's 17.
Ayes 20, no's 17. The motion fails. Senator Suravel.
Parliamentary agreement, Madam President. Are we at the point of the calendar where we do points of personal privilege?
Well, we have a bill before us, Senator. What is it that you wish to do? Well, that's true, the bill is not before us. Yes, sir, it is, we are at that point.
Great, I have a point of personal privilege then.
The Senator may say aye.
Thank you, Madam President. Hey, Madam President, unfortunately, we were unable to, I think, get some good work done today, which we had hoped to get done. I can tell the body that the folks on this side of the chamber came here today ready to get some work done and do some good things and make some good laws. Just want to make clear that this morning, the Chairman of Senate Finance, myself, spent, I don't know, two and a half, maybe three hours with the Governor, three hours with the Governor, trying to, a person on the third floor, I'm sorry, a person on the third floor, trying to reach some kind of a resolution that would move this process along. I think during that process, we probably made two, three, four, I think Madam Chairman thinks, six different proposals, none of which were accepted. I would just like to note for the body as well, I think we made another proposal, I want to say about three weeks ago, we made another proposal about two weeks ago. So on all, I think, we've tried to make, I think, probably between five and eight different proposals to try to preserve the long-term viability of the program for the people that it seeks to benefit. Today, out of the Senate Finance Committee, we passed a bill that gave the advocates for the VNM's program pretty much everything they asked for, plus, plus, tens of millions of dollars to fund the programs at the universities, where right now, children, students, families on financial aid are currently funding the program, not taxpayers. We added that to the bill. And we also added the requirement that students who benefit from this program show satisfactory academic performance. Starting July 1 of 2025, assuming we don't make any, which would go into effect if we don't make any other changes in the next budget cycle, the next session in 2025, this January. This adequate satisfactory academic performance requirement is something that is currently required of every student receives financial aid, every student that gets a Pell Grant. Virtually every single student that gets any kind of scholarship whatsoever for just about anything has to show this. Students that participate from the state tag program, students that benefit from the G3 program, students that currently benefit from the existing line-of-duty program. It's a really standard, longstanding, well-known requirement that if somebody else is paying for your college, you have to show satisfactory academic progress, that you're taking classes and you're doing better than a D average. Not a lot to ask for asking the state to pay tens of thousands, if not for some people, hundreds of thousands of dollars for their higher education. From the beginning, I can tell you, this caucus has felt like we're some of the only ones that are fighting to protect the long-term fiscal sustainability of this program. When it was adopted, when the changes were made in 2019, it was projected to only cost $5.4 million a year to the students at the other universities. Since then, it's proven to be so popular and successful that it's ended up costing, so far, I think in the last year, an additional $45 million, and it's projected to keep growing and growing. We've been concerned from the beginning that the popularity and the growth of the program has jeopardized its long-term financial viability for the people who really need it. And that's why changes were proposed. We tried to create numerous processes through the various offers we made to create a process over the next 12 months by which we could reach a consensus to preserve this program for the long term. So that if your mom or your dad is killed in combat, is disabled in combat, or due to their military service suffers a disability, whether it's they suffer from PTSD because of rape, or in a car accident, or where they got carpal tunnel disease or a really bad back, that that program will be available. We also sought to protect the other students who've been funding it by requiring the federal government to step up to the plate and help fund this program through Pell Grants and financial aid and other scholarships. We're trying to protect the program for its long-term financial viability and create a process. And Madam President, I'll say, what's really of concern is is how people have instead chosen to play politics with this. I want to point out that the Governor, the Governor is the one who started this conversation, the man on the third floor is the one who began this conversation. That bill that was put in at the beginning of the session was the Governor's proposal. Two days after the Governor signed the bill, he could have made amendments. If he didn't like the language, he could have made amendments, we could have been back here voting on the amendments. Two days afterwards, the Governor said that it's our job to repeal the bill he just signed. I don't think anybody has ever seen that in this body. When's the last time you heard a Governor asking to repeal the budget he just signed two days later? Over the last 60 days, we've been getting lots of questions. People asking, what does this language mean? How does it apply to kids who are waitlisted? How does it apply to kids in community college? How does it apply to people that change which school they want to go to? How does it apply if you pick the school on May 15th, but you didn't apply for the VNM's program until July? I had a constituent in my office ask me this question this morning. These are all questions that could have been answered if the Governor had simply got Shev to publish guidance answering these people's questions. But instead, someone decided not to issue guidance so that the pot would continue to be stirred, and people would continue to be upset, people would continue to be angry because it's more important to play politics with this program than actually provide answers and solutions to get this done so these families can have certainty, at least for the coming academic year. And Madam President, what we now find is we have a bill that would solve everyone's problems, would answer all the questions, would repeal all the changes. But instead, we're not going to vote on it. And we also added the requirement that students who benefit from this program show satisfactory academic performance. Starting July 1 of 2025, assuming we don't make any, which would go into effect if we don't make any other changes in the next budget cycle, this, the next session in 2025, this January. This adequate satisfactory academic performance requirement is something that is currently required of every student that receives financial aid, every student that gets a Pell Grant. Virtually every single student that gets any kind of scholarship whatsoever for just about anything has to show this. Students that participate from the state tag program, students that benefit from the G3 program, students that currently benefit from the existing line-of-duty program. It's a really standard, longstanding, well-known requirement that if somebody else is paying for your college, you have to show satisfactory academic progress, that you're taking classes and you're doing better than a D average. Not a lot to ask for asking the state to pay tens of thousands, if not for some people, hundreds of thousands of dollars for their higher education. From the beginning, I can tell you, this caucus has felt like we're some of the only ones that are fighting to protect the long-term fiscal sustainability of this program. When it was adopted, when the changes were made in 2019, it was projected to only cost 5.4 million a year to the students at the other universities. Since then, it's proven to be so popular and successful that it's ended up costing, so far, I think in the last year, an additional 45 million, and it's projected to keep growing and growing. We've been concerned from the beginning that the popularity and the growth of the program has jeopardized its long-term financial viability for the people who really need it. And that's why changes were proposed. We tried to create numerous processes through the various offers we made to create a process over the next 12 months by which we could reach a consensus to preserve this program for the long term, so that if your mom or your dad is killed in combat, is disabled in combat, or due to their military service suffers a disability, whether it's they suffer from PTSD because of rape, or in a car accident, or where they got carpal tunnel disease, or a really bad back, that that program will be available. We also sought to protect the other students who've been funding it by requiring the federal government to step up to the plate and help fund this program through Pell Grants and financial aid and other scholarships. We're trying to protect the program for its long-term financial viability and create a process. And Madam President, I'll say, what's really of concern is how people have instead chosen to play politics with this. I want to point out that the governor, the governor is the one who started this conversation. The man on the third floor is the one who began this conversation. That bill that was put in the beginning of the session was the governor's proposal. Two days after the governor signed the bill, he could have made amendments. If he didn't like the language, he could have made amendments. We could have been back here voting on the amendments. Two days afterwards, the governor said that it's our job to repeal the bill he just signed. I don't think anybody has ever seen that in this body. When's the last time you heard a governor asking to repeal the budget he just signed two days later? Over the last 60 days, we've been getting lots of questions. People asking, what does this language mean? How does it apply to kids who are waitlisted? How does it apply to kids in community college? How does it apply to people that change which school they want to go to? How does it, how does it apply if you enroll, if you picked a school on May 15th, but you didn't apply for the V N M's program until July? I had a constituent in my office ask me this question this morning. These are all questions that could have been answered if the governor had simply got CHEV to publish guidance answering these people's questions. But instead, instead, someone decided not to issue guidance so that the pot would continue to be stirred, and people would continue to be upset, and people would continue to be angry because it's more important to play politics with this program than actually provide answers and solutions to get this done so these families can have certainty, at least for the coming academic year. And Madam President, what we now find is we have a bill that would solve everyone's problems, would answer all the questions, it would repeal all the changes. But instead, we're not going to vote on it today because of a procedural objection that could have easily been waived, or because we could have weighed reeds on this bill with a simple 80% vote, which is commonly done, but instead, for political reasons, those procedural objections were not waived. And unfortunately, the advocates, many of which appear in the chamber, are going to get exactly what they don't want because people have chosen to play politics. And it's really a sad day because we are the ones who've been fighting to preserve this program for the families that need it. And I'm disappointed, Madam Chairman, but that's how it goes in politics sometimes, and we'll have to see about the consequences. Hopefully, we'll be back one day to fix this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam President.
The senator from Lynchburg, Senator Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The senator may say aye.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the body. I am very disappointed that we are leaving here again for the second time without taking action to give guidance to the surviving members of our military veterans and first responders. We're not playing politics with this bill. The politics is out of it. The Democrats introduced a bill in the House, the Democrat Speaker of the House, signed on by 92 members, Republican and Democrats, in the House of Delegates, and passed this bill repealing the budget language. They sent it to us. All we had to do today was to bring that bill to the floor and vote on it. And a majority of the members of this body have signed on to the bill that the Democrats passed and sent to us. We came here two weeks ago with the opportunity to revoke this language, to pass a bill. No bill was heard in finance. We left without taking any action. We then recessed to allow the House to do their job, 92 to nothing, to satisfy the families of our veterans and our first responders. And then we get to Finance Committee today, and someone says, oh, talking about procedural maneuvers, oh, it's unconstitutional. Well, let me tell you, as you know, I'm a big-city attorney from Lynchburg, and we've got a lot of small-town attorneys from around here. But the first rule of legislation, it passes the House, it passes the Senate, it gets signed into law by the governor. And it is legal until a judge says it is not constitutional. No constitutional scholars weighed in on this bill. We don't have any legal opinions from the Attorney General or some constitutional scholars or the Supreme Court that that bill is unconstitutional. We had a couple of people opine in the Senate Finance Committee that it was unconstitutional. We passed the bill, we send it to the governor, a judge will tell us if it's unconstitutional. And then they pass another bill in Senate Finance today that we got at 1 o'clock, 1:15, before we would start session at 2 o'clock. There's not fundamentally different in any way constitutionally than the bill that was before the committee that they did not pass. And to boot, to say that we are somehow blocking passage of this bill, the rules are very clear. You cannot waive the reading of a bill unless the House and Senate do it. And as I pointed out, the ruffians in the House of Delegates are not here today. That is why it is so quiet and peaceful. So clearly, we were not going to be able to vote on this bill today. We are here, it's our second time here, the House has done their job, we should have voted on this bill, we should have revoked clearly, repealed clearly, the budget language. We should have stood up for our families of our military veterans and first responders. We had the opportunity, we have not done it. I hope that we will come back and reconsider the House bill, do a full repeal that will give us the entire summer until we come back in January to fix this. I'll tell you this, the families of our military veterans who are going to college, the first responders who are going to college, who are planning out their futures, they don't care how we got here, why we got here. All they care is that we are here and that we are not getting the job done. We need to fix this. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Senator Reeves, the senator from Orange.
Thank you, Madam President. Rise for a point of personal privilege.
The senator has a floor.
Madam President, one of the things I learned as a young second lieutenant preparing to go overseas during the First Gulf War was, I learned a lot from my company commander. And he had this quote, and I think he stole it from a Senator, a U.S. Senator during World War I, and he said, "The first casualty of a war is truth." Well, Madam President, if you ask the folks in the gallery, are we at war right now, I'm sure they would tell you, yes, we are. And I think what's at stake here, Madam President, is trust. Trust and transparency. Getting a bill an hour, two, three hours ago today, to vote on today, does not show transparency. The people that are affected most by these settings and these things that we're getting together on haven't been invited to any of the meetings. Everything's been done in darkness. It's been done in back chambers. Madam President, the Majority Leader and the Chairman of Senate Finance said they came and worked on it today with the governor. That's not transparency, Madam President, and it just breaks my heart. Again, I'll reiterate what Senator Flimensberg has just said. We're curating policy in darkness. And we have the answer. It was HB 6003. And it's okay if the House gets credit. Reagan always said, it doesn't matter who gets the credit, as long as the job is getting done. But apparently, it does. It matters. Madam President, I had a bill that I voluntarily would give to the Chairman of Senate Finance, put her name on it. I don't care. We just need to fix this thing. And if I sound irritated, I'm beyond irritated. Beyond irritated. There are people in other parts of the world that are dying today, fighting battles, real battles, and this is important. And we have the solution, as the senator from Lynchburg said. All we had to do was pass it out. But we can't because people are being prideful, Madam President. They're being prideful. They want their names on things. They want to get a win. And the only people that are winning in wars, no one wins. That's what happens in wars. Madam President, I hope this chamber will get to some reasonable, prudent level and let some of the air out of the tire so we can actually get to work. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair calls on the senator from Hanover, Senator McDougal.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The senator has a floor.
Madam President, we come to this body, you know, we're citizen legislators. We come here for 60 days this year to try to work on things, including the budget, and we continue to be here longer. This puts a lot of stress on many of the members individually and our families. And my daughter is here with me today for much longer than she anticipated. But Madam President, it bothers me to hear the conversations that this is politics. I think many of us take our obligation very seriously. Many made some substantial efforts on both sides of the aisle just to physically get here, either driving or flying hundreds, if not thousands, of miles. But Madam President, the reality is, we have a disagreement. When the budget came out, we all worked pretty darn hard to try to come up with a solution. We sat down in a room, Republicans and Democrats, House and Senate and the governor, and we came up with a solution. Now, everybody wasn't happy, but we worked to a solution. Right now, we have a situation where the language that got drafted right at the last moment was bad language. And we all seem to agree that it needs to be removed. When I got up on this floor last time we were here, a couple of weeks ago, I said, spend my life in court. And one of the things I've become very convinced of is that for litigants, parties to be heard and have confidence in the legal system, they need to know that the judge listens to their arguments. Even if the judge rules against them, they need to have the confidence that they're being heard. The families, many of them sitting in the gallery, many of them we've heard at committee meetings, many of them we've heard at the meeting that was put together at the War Memorial, many of them that have sent us emails or called us, want to be heard. They don't want us to come up with a solution together and tell them what it is. They want us to listen to them, take their views into account, and then come up with a solution. The only way we can do that is to repeal the language in the budget and then come up with a solution. When the governor came over today, I think it was in pretty, pretty good effort on his part to try to come to that solution. He heard from those individuals. Those individuals told us, we want you to repeal the language that's in the budget and then listen to us. Take time with J L A R C. Take time with the Governor's Commission. Take time with Madam Chairman's Committee through Finance. And through all of that, then come up with a solution. Don't work on it today. Don't come through multiple drafts. Don't sit down at a meeting with a half a dozen of you and come up with a solution. Repeal this and then come back with the solution after you've heard our comments and our thoughts. Madam President, it's pretty straightforward. The House passed a bill that was a clean repeal. Republicans and Democrats, it was unanimous in the House. Senate members, Republicans and Democrats, agreed that we need to come up with a clean repeal, and many of us signed on to that bill. And Madam President, I'm sure the Majority Leader knows that the other part of the procedural resolution says that the House cannot come back less than 48 hours' call of the Speaker. So even if we had passed his motion, we could not, the House could not have been back any sooner than 48 hours. So when we're talking about playing politics, the reality is, we have a choice. We can pass a clean repeal, listen to the people that have very strong personal opinions, and come back with a solution that works for all Virginia. It is straightforward. It is not complicated, and we could do that today. Now, I've heard an argument about the unconstitutionality of the House bill. But as I pointed out in committee, when you take the House bill and you look at Section 4-5.01, which is the section that we're talking about, both of those are set out entirely in the House bill and the Senate bill that passed committee. And in both of those bills, all the language that we're talking about, from item number seven, each of those items are stricken the exact same way in each of those bills. If the effort is for us to get to a clean repeal, if we want it to be a Senate bill, let's stop right now. Let's introduce a bill with that language in it, and let's do a clean repeal and get it done today. We're ready to do that. And if it was actually unconstitutional, we could have passed the House bill, and the governor could amend it and sent that entire code section set out back to us. There were other solutions to get it done. Madam President, we want to get it done. We want to get it done today. This is not politics. This is a disagreement about how we get it done. We feel strongly, the way that we restore confidence with our veterans and family members that have given so much to Virginia and the nation is for a clean repeal and then fix it. But the clean repeal has to happen first.
Chair recognizes Senator McPike, the senior senator from Prince William.
Thank you, Madam President. Rise for a point of personal privilege.
The senator has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to take time. I serve on the task force as well as the work group for the Senate and on J L A R C, so I get three different opportunities. And a lot of the advocates and families have spent a lot of time. I think we have been through about six hours of testimony, and I wanted to acknowledge their effort to be heard through the process and it's not going unnoticed throughout this. I have to say, the, give credit, I think, to where little credit's due to the senator from Roanoke. I believe it was one of the 39 to, the senator for Roanoke's name, in terms of whether or not to vote on the procedural resolution. And for those watching and see somewhat of a disjointed process, we are somewhat constrained by the resolution, so I congratulate the senator from Roanoke on getting that one right. So well done, sir. It is a clunkier process than we're normally used to, not being able to be a little bit more nimble, to have amendments, to have the normal process that we're used to in a normal session, which frankly, I think, doesn't help the level of dialogue and dynamic discussions that have happened both today and previous days, on the ability to listen to one other and to fix things and to be able to move on together, and to be able to respond to those we've heard through their testimony as well. And it was my hope today that through the process and the Chair of Finance's work to simply provide a modicum of similarity of programs across the bill, that the bill would have been able to be heard on the floor and voted today to be passed on. And yes, the governor amended because we do, I think, owe it to many of those who have advocated, and I know we care deeply about as well, in providing the right framework for Virginia moving forward. So in closing, Madam President, I'm hopeful that, number one, we do not adopt a resolution provided to us by the House, again, like this, constraining our ability to have dynamic discussions, being able to amend and being able to roll up the sleeves. That's what we're used to. And it's not very apparent to the public, I think, today. We're used to rolling up the sleeves together and working on a bipartisan, and this procedural resolution really is constrained this body and, I think, the work between both chambers. And I hope we never do it again. Thank you, Madam President.
Chair calls on Senator Rome, the senator from Western, Prince William.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The senator has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So first, along with the senior senator from Prince William and senators from Arlington, from Orange, and from Virginia Beach, all of us who serve on the work group that met on Friday with this, we heard some very heartbreaking testimony and all, and I don't want to relive everything that was said there. What I want to underscore is that for a lot of people who have, whether it's PTSD, you will have people who are opening old wounds and stuff, when you give the speech, when you hear other people talk, even if you don't give a speech and you hear other people talk, it'll stay with you for the rest of your day, and you're going to be reliving things that, as you know, the senator from Virginia Beach put, things that you put away in a lockbox for a very long time. And it can be incredibly difficult through the rest of the day. And I hope that whatever transpires through the rest of the summer, we're not going to be having to count on a lot of people to have to reopen so many wounds that have really, really traumatized a lot of folks in the Commonwealth right now. And it's not just the few folks who are showing up, it's the people who are at home, and especially for a lot of different types of survivors. I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that part in terms of speaking. So I do hope sincerely that we come up with a resolution as soon as humanly possible right now, because I don't think anyone wants to have to keep reopening and reliving their horrors in the worst days, not only of their lives, but of the family's lives to go with them. Second thing on this is, I co-patroned four different repeal bills at this point, three from the senator from Orange and one from the dean of the Prince William delegation, who's the chair of the House Appropriations Committee. I did that because I believe in the policy and so my constituents asked me to do. And at the same time, I also know that based on what's happened through process, what happens in the committee process and everything, the bill that was to be, that was reported out of finance today is what is in front of us today. And so the issue of transparency came up, as the senator from Orange said. So I thought I'd kind of take a novel approach. I want to actually read to y'all what's in the bill, and I want to actually, like, just tell everyone, this is what actually came out today, okay? And so I think where most people in the Commonwealth who are a part of this debate are, I think you're going to find consensus on three-fourths of it right off are, I think you're going to find consensus on three-fourths of it right off, right off the gate. There's going to be question about one part of it, and whether we should have done, we should wait until January to do that, when regular session starts again, or this part. At the same time, I do think there is enough consensus to keep the legislative process moving forward, while at the same time, very much making sure that we get to a point where we have the quickest solution to this that is also constitutional, and however leadership in multiple departments of government, or agencies of government at this point solve that question, that's for y'all with law degrees. So, first part here. First part of this bill for SB 6011 deals with the actual money that would be coming in. And so, this says item 470.10, "From such general fund revenues as are collected for fiscal year 2024 in excess of the official fiscal year 2024 revenue estimate included in the final 2022-2024 Biennial Appropriation Act adopted in the 2024 Special Session 1, Remnant 1, after the designations in Paragraph K of Item 470 of this act are reserved and Remnant 2, after any calculated revenue reserve fund and water quality improvement fund, Part A, deposits are made in accordance with Item 470 of this act, $45 million or a proportion thereof shall be reserved by the comptroller in the committed fund balance for the transfer purposes of Paragraph J of Item 130 related to the offsetting of the impact of programs under Title 23.1, Chapter 6, Code of Virginia. Notwithstanding Item 130 or any other provision of this act, the appropriation in Paragraph K of Item 130 of this act shall be appropriated by the State Council of Higher Education for Virginia," that's CHEV, "to offset the impact of programs under Title 23.1, Chapter 6, Code of Virginia." So, what that section does in its entirety, that's the $45 million of additional money that would be going into the program. That's a good thing, and I think every person here has agreement on that. I don't think anyone has disagreement. The next part of what's actually happened here is when you get to line 178, 178 through line 203, this is the repeal section that matches what came out from the House. This is from six, basically HB 6003. The parts that would be repealed from the budget that we passed back in May, where it says waivers and related stipends. A, notwithstanding any other provision of law, individuals eligible for the financial aid waivers and related stipends contained in 23.1, Chapter 6, shall, number one, established domicile as provided in 23.1502, and the State Council of Higher Education for Virginia domicile guidelines. That would be struck. Number two, complete the free application for federal student aid, FISA or FAFSA, or equivalent state financial aid application. That would be struck from existing state law. Number three, make satisfactory academic progress as defined in the institution for the purpose of eligibility under Title 4 of the Federal Higher Education Act as amended. That would be struck. And then we have Section B, waivers and related stipends under this section are limited to a certificate or associate, or associate degree at a public two-year institution, certificate for first bachelor's degree at a public four-year institution of higher education. Eligibility is restricted in a combined total of no more than four years of its equivalent. That would be struck from currency law. E, one, waivers granted under this section shall cover the last dollar cost in in-state undergraduate tuition, mandatory education general program, ENG fees, and mandatory non-ENG fees after applying in the following order. Remnant 1, all federal aid under 38 UFC Part III, dollar for dollar. Remnant 2, all state grants and scholarship dollar for dollar. And Remnant 3, a proportion of all the federal gift aid, Pell, and expected family contribution EFC or its equivalent under FAFCSA simplification as determined by CHEV. That would all be struck. Almost done with the struck parts. Next part, the proportion in C1, Remnant 3, shall be determined by CHEV based on the undergraduate tuition, mandatory education, general program, ENG fees, mandatory non-ENG fees as a percentage of total cost of attendance. That would be struck. And then three, mandatory non-ENG fees in C1 are fees charged to all students regardless of degree program or as defined by CHEV, mandatory non-ENG fees do not include room and board. That would be struck. Finally, D, students enrolled in the program in 2023, 2024, or formally committed to the institution enroll in summer or fall 2024 courses by May 15, 2024, shall not be subject to the provisions of A1, B, C1, and C2 of the section. That would also be struck. So, on the record, stated and spoken into the record now, those are the restrictions that have caused the most amount of concern here, and under the bill that came up before us today, those would be struck, and so that would be that repeal section. That is the full repeal. It matches what was in HB 6003. The issue that comes up at this point is not the two things that are in finite code. The two, the issue comes up is what comes, what happens in the enactment clause. I'll read the one that we actually, I think, all agree on first, and then, well, the one we agree on, the bottom one, just for sake of time, as I'm being asked here, that's the J-LARC study. We approved that this morning. So, J-LARC has already approved it on a bipartisan basis, thumbs up, everyone was good. The issue that's causing the heartburn is from lines 219 to 231. It just says, "Seven, notwithstanding any other provision of law, guidelines or regulations to the contrary, beginning on or after July 1, 2025, individuals who are otherwise eligible for financial aid waivers described in 23.1608 of Code of Virginia shall be required to make satisfactory academic progress as defined by the institution for the purposes of eligibility under Title 4 of the Federal Education Act as amended in order to be eligible for such financial aid waivers unless an act passed by the 2025 regular session, the Virginia General Assembly, or the General Assembly establishes contrary academic progress requirement guidelines for Virginia Military Survivors' Independence Education Program as informed by the recommendations of Executive Directive 7, 2024, Task Force of the Virginia Military Survivors' Independent Education Program, the Senate Select Work Group on the Virginia Military Survivors' Independence Education Program, or the Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission review of the Virginia Military Survivors' Independence Education Program, and such act conforms with provision of Item 4-13.00 of this act. We like long sentences in the legislature." So, now that we've read that into the record, I hope at least going forward, number one, we're dealing with the transparency part. Now, everyone in the body, everyone here, everyone at home knows what the bill does. That's the important part here. Number two, we have agreements on three out of four of it. The last part, that part number seven, the disagreement is, should we do it now and then have the J-LARC study, or should we allow the J-LARC study to move forward, which it is no matter what, and then come back in January and deal with that section? However we go through with this from here on out, I hope we come up with a solution that is, of course, transparent, of course, brings as much feedback as possible into it, and at the end of the day, allows us to accomplish the goal of making sure that we actually get all this good stuff, the stuff that we really, really do like, that we actually get then to law. So, thank you so much, Madam President.
Chair recognizes Senator Stewart, the senator from King George.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The senator has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I am not that big-city lawyer. I'm just a country boy from the Northern Act, and I don't claim to be able to understand all the intricacies of everything that we do in this body. I try to keep up and work as best I can, and I've worked on this issue a lot lately, and I've listened to many people wax poetically about it, and I've read the bills, and I've heard my, my friend, the senator from Eastern Fairfax. Again, we've talked about all these proposals that were made to the governor, six today, one last week, one the week before, but what I don't understand, and it evades me completely, and maybe it's just because I am a country boy, why wasn't there a proposal for a clean repeal, just like the House did? And I, my friend would say, "Well, that bill's unconstitutional." I don't think that's right. In fact, I think there are strong counterarguments against his allegations that it's unconstitutional, and my friend from Lynchburg is in fact right. It's never unconstitutional until a judge declares it as such and somebody challenges it. But I'm confident that our staff here has the ability to draft a clean repeal bill that is in fact constitutional. And so, I look at these arguments back and forth, and I, and I believe, I believe the Majority Leader, because I do believe he is a man of integrity, he wants to protect the, the long-term viability of this program. But I've tried to boil this thing down and look at it, and here's where we find ourselves at the end of the day. I never question anybody's legislative motives, but, but we have here now in this bill with this first enactment clause, which causes a great deal of concern for me, because I couldn't get clear answers on it. And I do believe it gives the universities way too much control. I, in many ways, believe this could be a license to discriminate, God forbid. We just ended legacy admissions today, and now we're giving them all this discretion in these standards, which will in fact vary from institution to institution according to what these institutions want to see in their student body, and don't forget that, because that's the control we're giving them in this bill. But at the end of the day, this is what it boils down to. This enactment clause is a poison pill, and here's why. Because the House has made it clear, they want a clean repeal bill. The governor's made it clear, he wants a clean repeal bill, and this ends up being a poison pill, and we're not going to be able to pass anything. And these people are going to keep coming, and they're going to keep asking us to fix this problem, and they're going to be stuck with the language that is in place today, and these children that have worked hard to get into school, and they don't have the money to go because their parent got killed somewhere in a war trying to protect us, they're going to have to sit out and wait and figure out what to do, because we've got a bill with a poison pill, and the House won't pass ours, and we won't pass the Houses. And I suggest to this body that we're much better than that. And I think it's time to get down and get this done. One of us is going to have to compromise with the other, and we need not continue down this path, and I hope that we can get there sooner rather than later.
Senator Favola, the senator from Arlington.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I rise on the point of personal privilege.
The senator may continue.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the greatest respect for my colleague from King George County, but I have to say that when lawmakers come forward with a bill that they have debated and put a lot of thought into it, I would never categorize that as a poison pill. And I, I'm sure my colleague from King George's County didn't quite mean it the way it sounded. Making policy is very challenging. There are a lot of people that have to be educated, and I'd want to take a moment to thank all of the advocates and the family members who have come to us today and, of course, testified in front of the Select Committee that my committee, my committee had a hearing on on Friday, and I'm sure you have talked to many, many lawmakers. Your stories were compelling. They were real, and they made a difference. I remember them. I was able to relay them to many colleagues, as were you. That helped us bring this process to a point where more lawmakers were educated. At this time, not one bill before us had anything less than a repeal, a full repeal, and that was the first threshold request that all the advocates and family members had asked for. That is progress. We did have some procedural issues that, that put us in a bit of a box as we have a conversation between the House and the Senate. And then, of course, the gentleman on the third floor will have something to say as well, in terms of what we pass. But the point is, is that we are now looking at a pathway forward that is going to remove the anxiety that something is going to go away, that the program's going to go away, and replace that anxiety, I hope, with optimism about how we can improve this program so it works effectively, so everybody who is eligible actually would be able to access the funding, and that we understand exactly how our universities are implementing the program. This conversation is important, and it'll be necessary, I think, to end up with a really good bill, and we have time to do that. I know we have time to do that. I'd like to get it done before next session, but I don't know if that's possible. I just want individuals and lawmakers to embrace the fact that we are going to continue to work on this, we are going to get better at how we shape this policy and proposal, and hopefully, we will all be on the same page when it comes to next session. If we can do it sooner, that would be great. But my message is, we are making progress, we care. I think there's pretty uniform agreement that we are honoring our veterans, we want to support their families, we believe in their service, and we are grateful for their service. Thank you, Madam President.
Senator Sturdivant, the senator from Colonial Heights.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The senator may continue.
Madam President, very briefly, I think it's important for us to, to remember how we got here. We had a, a budget that, among many other things, did more than just fiddle around the edges with this program for veterans. It had, in fact, fundamentally transformed it and gutted it. And it was done in such a way, through the budget, and not through legislation and the committee process, because the gutting of that program would never have made it through the committee process, would never have survived as legislation, would never have survived as a bill. So it was done through the committee process. And so, there's already, I think, a level of distrust and mistrust among some of us, and I think some who are here to advocate on behalf of this program. But once that happened and the budget was, was passed and signed into law, and many of us learned what the transformation of this program was really going to do to these families and to kids that were getting ready to go to school in next month, in August, both in this body and the one down the hall in the House, a majority of both bodies, of the State Senate and the House of Delegates, realize that we have to come back and fix this. And not just fixing around the edges, not just a partial fix, but a full fix. And what that has meant is a full repeal of the changes to this program. And the House did what they, what they needed to do. They came back last week, and they passed a bipartisan full repeal of the changes to this program, and they passed it unanimously. Every single Republican and Democrat in the House of Delegates voted to repeal these changes. And as the process works under our Constitution, that bill came down the hall to us for today for consideration. And while we did have a Senate Finance Committee meeting, and there was the patron, a patron of that House bill here to present it in the Senate Finance Committee, was here for I don't know how many hours, never got an opportunity to present that full repeal bill for consideration in Senate Finance for a vote, so that it potentially could have come to this floor for a vote. And in addition to that, the senator from Orange had, had a companion bill that was signed on to by, I believe, a majority of the members of this body, that was also a full repeal, like the House bill. And likewise, that bill didn't even get docketed, let alone a vote in committee. So that's where we are. But the bill that we, that has been put forward, Madam President, is not a full repeal. It is not the full fix that has been asked for and advocated for. It is not the full fix that a majority of the General Assembly would support. And in fact, it was mentioned that they, as a, being a poison pill being put into this thing, it's, it's another aspect that allows the gutting of this program by the colleges and universities in the way that they implement it and enforce it in their individual schools, and that is not acceptable. So, a mistake was made in the, in the gutting of this program in the budget, whether it was intentional or unintentional, we'll have those conversations down the road. But a majority of this legislature has said, "We need to have a full repeal and a full fix." And when we tell our kids to go and clean their room, and we come back and they've only cleaned half or cleaned, or cleaned some of it, then that's not acceptable. We tell them to clean the whole room. And likewise, this legislature needs to fully fix the changes to this program with a full repeal. Thank you, Madam President.
Senator Hashme, the senator from Chesterfield.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The senator may say on.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo the comments that were made by the senator from Arlington, and I especially want to address the question. I'm really disturbed by this language of a poison pill as used by the senator from Chester, no, Colonial Heights and Chester, no, Colonial Heights, and I'm sorry, forgetting King George. So, King George. This language of the poison pill, that language would actually come as a great surprise to anybody who works in higher education. Satisfactory academic progress is a standard term that is used throughout higher education. And just to be clear, it's actually a protective measure for students. And so when a student is flagged for not making satisfactory academic progress, it means that a whole system of wraparound services is deployed to ensure that the student gets the support that they necessarily need to make satisfactory academic progress. Counseling services, advising services, the faculty are involved in reaching out to that student, working with that student. It baffles me that we have senators on this floor who are positioning the idea that a university or a college would want to actually see its students fail. Which college or university wants to see its students fail? By contrast, every institution of higher education, the mission is for student success. And so when a student is flagged for not making satisfactory academic progress, the latitude that is provided in the system of federal financial aid and state financial aid is not to get rid of that student from your campus, but in fact, the latitude is to provide every opportunity for that student to succeed. The institutions are given the latitude to give one semester, two semester of additional support and resources. The institutions are given the latitude to provide counseling services and advising services to bring that student back, maybe after a semester of sabbatical. Those are the degrees of latitude. They're designed to help the student. They are not designed to expel students. And so if we are going to be making responsible investments, financial investments, using Virginia taxpayer dollars, we want to ensure that every student has that opportunity to be successful, that they have the guidance, they have the counseling, they have the advisors, they have faculty support. That's what we are trying to do. This is not a poison pill. In fact, it is to ensure the success, not of the, just of the program, but to ensure the success of all the students. And we presented a bill today that takes back this program to where the advocates have wanted, where we want. We want to invest in our families. We want to invest in the dependents and survivors of those heroes. And this bill actually seeks to add one more step, and that is to help our students succeed in the academic programs of their choices. This is a good bill, and we ought to have acted on it today, and it's a shame that we did not.
Senator Suterlein. The Senator from Roanoke.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise for a brief point of personal privilege.
The Senator has the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I appreciate the comments of the Senator from Prince William. I don't think that we should ever make it so that we can't amend budget bills or appropriations bills or any bill. That goes completely against our process, and that was an error, and I hope it's one that will never happen again. The 48-hour rule that we enforced today is a great rule, because it prevents mistakes from happening. And the simple fact that we slow things down, that's the way to do it. We ought not be introducing a bill an hour, two hours before we're all expected to vote on it. The proper way was what we saw demonstrated, and I hate when things like this happen. One day, I had to rise to defend NPR on the floor, and I never anticipated that. Another day, I think I had to defend the Washington Post. And today, I now have to defend the Democratic House Caucus. But they did this the right way. And I think that we passed a good, we passed a good budget, and I thought, I had concerns about this in part because I, on the program that we're addressing today, because I thought I didn't understand it that well, and I thought others didn't, and I was worried with what we were doing. And that's, I mentioned to some folks, that's why we ought to be able to amend this at the time. But I still think it was a good budget on the whole, overwhelming. I'm glad we did it, and I thought that in a divided government, that was a very good budget. But Madam President, I hope that we'll continue to follow the 48-hour rule, and the House Democrats, I think, were correct. And so when I hear that this is politics, you know, I think that politics, and I say this in the best way, one of the best political players I've ever seen is the current Speaker of the House, and I mean that with great respect. He is a sharp mind. But he has this view. The majority of the Republicans on the other side in the House unanimously agreed with him. The Governor agreed. I know there are several Democrats in this chamber that agree. So I don't think this is political at all. I've refrained from making political comments throughout this process, and I think we ought to have taken up the House bill. And so I'm very unhappy that the majority leader made me defend the House Democrats today. Thank you, Madam President.
Senator Distef. The Senior Senator from Virginia Beach.
Madam President, I rise for a point of personal privilege.
The Senator has the floor.
Madam President, I'm going to start with, a promise made is a promise kept. I'm fortunate enough to serve on the task force that met on Friday. And before we started, the House was debating and discussing House Bill 6003, a clean repeal bill. Madam President, while we were taking testimony, we saw that it passed unanimously, and I shared that with my colleagues on my side and the other side. Madam President, that bill went through 91 or 92 to zero unanimously. It had 99 or 100 House members signed on. Madam President, had 22 members of the Senate signed on, a majority of the Senate when it passed. Had that bill been on the floor today, that bill would have gone through here with a majority of the Senate supporting it, and we would have had what everybody here is talking about, a clean repeal bill. But that didn't happen. That didn't happen because it never got heard in Subcommittee, I'm sorry, in Finance Committee. Madam President, what we failed to really talk about on the floor today is those people who are testifying in front of us. We're taking our fallen officers, their families, military, police, fire, EMS, the families of our fallen officers, those who've come back broken, both mentally and physically, and trying to struggle through how they continue on with their life, how they fight the demons of this life and what they've seen, heard, and done. How do they get through those demons and continue on with what we call life? When those members commit suicide and take their life because they can't stand up to those demons, we then have that promise where we educate their children. And the promise we made to the fallen and those who come back broken is that we'll educate their children. Madam President, these individuals, in their most vulnerable time, we ask them to come and testify in front of us, defend, justify their disabilities. Where else would we ever have somebody defend and justify their vulnerabilities, their disabilities, when they're in their most fragile state? So when, during this committee on Friday, when I stood up and said, these individuals, we're asking them to take out of that box the horrors that they've seen, done, and lived through, and open up that box and share their stories with us. Again, the stories that have broken these individuals. And they've shared those stories with us, and we sit there and listen, and they think that we're trying to make them justify their disabilities, justify their loss of their dad, so they could get education that we promised. We've done it since 1930. Promise made is a promise kept. We promised them of this. Madam President, I'm very disappointed, because these individuals are at their most vulnerable point. They're at the most vulnerable time, and they're so fragile that after they leave from testifying in front of us, we've had some that had breakdowns then. We have individuals that have given up in the government. Why have they given up on their government? They've given up on their government because they were told that when they went to war, that their children would be covered, their children's education, we would take care of them. And Madam President, we decided we were going to change that. A number of us yellow-sheeted that, because we couldn't vote against it. You voted up or down on the budget. We had to yellow-sheet it to say, we like everything else in this budget except these things. The Governor couldn't have line item vetoed those. It's the compromised budget bill. It's the one, the conference report, that goes up or down. He had no choice but to pass it, or we wouldn't have a budget. Madam President, the individuals that are here today, the individuals that have testified in front of us, the individuals who have been physically broken, mentally broken, or worse, who have lost their lives, and we promised to take care of their children and the education of their children. Madam President, we had the opportunity to pass a clean repeal bill today with House Bill 6003. This would have been the last action, and it would have been, gone on to the Governor. The Governor would have signed it, and we would have had a repeal bill by the end of the week. Instead, we're going to delay, we're going to defer, we're going to drag them back here multiple times to defend and justify their spouse or their disabilities. I think that's repugnant. Madam President, I wish we could have taken up House Bill 6003, a clean repeal bill, and passed it for the good of these individuals, so they could go back to healing and continue with their lives. Madam President, I think we all want the same thing. I just think that we should have today taken up House Bill 6003 as a vehicle to do so and sent it on to the Governor. Thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the Senate? The clerk will report any announcements on the desk.
There are no announcements.
Chair recognizes the Senator from Portsmouth. Senator Lucas.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I move that the Senate do now recess.
All in favor of that motion will say aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The Senate now stands in recess.